And our school communities are one of our strongest communities. And we all still know our mascots. And I could, I won't do it. I can still sing the Margaret Brent song, but I will not, believe me. This is being recorded. That would be really bad. So, but I could, I could hum it. So, I'm gonna let each of us. My name is Holly Hazard, and I am from the Hartwood District. And so, I'm gonna go to my left, and then we'll go the other way.
I'm Susan Randall, and I'm from the George Washington District.
I'm Elizabeth Warner. I'm from Griffiths-Widewater District.
I'm Stan Jones, interim superintendent. And like Ms. Hazard, I was also a PTA president. My daughter went to school in Reichel County, and I was her PTA president in fourth and fifth grade. So, thank you for serving.
Yeah. All right. Tonight, it really is a roundtable discussion. That's the best way, the best way is to know what you're seeing on the ground, what ways you think you can help us, what are the biggest challenges you see? You are the boots on the ground in the schools. I know you are, because I think all of us have been there. And so, you see things that we may or may not be able to see. I have found the easiest way to do it is, though, to group it by our, like, elementary, then middle, and then high school. We're gonna have some common themes, but we're also gonna have some specific themes for each, each area. And also, maybe our Head Start team is here, too. But I'm gonna start first with our elementary. And we may have people online, so I will get to you. But how many elementary school, PTO, PTA people are here? If you can raise your hand, so I have sort of an idea. Okay. Is he has him? And do we have any online? Okay, hearing that, I just want...
We do, we do. They're not...
Oh, they're coming up now. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna start with those that are in the, in our room, and then I will move to calling out anybody who's online with regard to elementary. So, all right, elementary, you get us started. What are some of the challenges? What are some things we can help, but what are some things you see in the schools that we need support? Who wants to get us rolling? Go ahead, and tell us which school, please.
Sure. My name is Lisa Star. I'm from Falmouth County, and I'm the PTA president.
Great.
Thank you. You know, we struggle across the district with recruiting and retaining teachers and staff. So, I feel like that should be one of the top priorities at this point, and not just buses, but all around. Have your priorities, where does that fall on the list, what are some of the things that are gonna, you know, take place to help grow new bats, and how can we help?
I will tell you one thing, and I'll take, and then I'll always let, and then I'm gonna let Dr. Jones also certainly address. Recruiting and retaining teachers is, there is a big responsibility for the school district through our HR, through that. But I will tell you, the support that our staff feels within our schools is probably one of second to not, like, how do we reach out? I know certain schools have coffee bars, or they have different things. I will tell you, that really is also important. So, I, it is a partnership. But I do know recruiting and retaining, but I know Dr. Warner can probably, and Ms. Randall, they sit on the finance committee, so they may have some other ideas. And I know Dr. Jones can probably hit on some of the HR side. But I just wanna say, your role in that is huge as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that we did is we've implemented a tuition assistance program for our new teachers, our new hires. We have, we have, we have, well, allowed transfer for our licensed staff. We are going to be trying to expand that policy into our uniformed salary staff, so that we can try to create an environment that keeps all of our staff here, not just teachers, but everybody. We have worked on a number of programs in the last couple of years to try to work on retention, and it remains one of our top priorities in our budget, just our budget priorities from last year, and it again, in our budget priorities this year. Salary is part of it. It's always part of it, and we are trying to be more competitive with, with our Northern Virginia neighbors, where many of our, our good staff lead to. But we also are, we are also working on, so we're working on that salary scale, and trying to make sure that we're offering competitive wages. So, we are very aware of this. This is, you know, once we get an employee to, in our, in our community and in our schools, we invest heavily in those employees, and it's important for us to keep them, because that, that is a, you know, that pays back in dividends over the long run.
I would also add into that, and I'm, and I'm gonna speak, just because I've visited Falmouth before, but I'm start, in other schools, I've seen this as well, is where a parent has been, become very involved, feels a giving heart to the school, steps into, you know, volunteer, steps into para position, and then the school system can help in getting you through to the actual certification route as well. And so, we find that some of the best ways that we get the best hearts for our kids is through the base of a volunteer, working their way into the certification process to become a teacher. And, you know, that development is, and I know at Falmouth, it is something that, you know, I, as I walk through the halls, she's like, "That was one of my presidents, and now she's my this." And so, I know that Falmouth and other schools I've visited have that. So, that's another key thing. And like Dr. Warner said, and I know Dr. Jones has mentioned with us several times, is the, you know, the part of, once you become a teacher in our county, the, the assistance and the, the education doesn't end for you either. You know, with our mentorship programs, you know, gives to each other teacher, former teachers, or, you know, certified teachers, an opportunity to become mentors to new teachers, so that you can move into the process. My son was a first-year, first-grade teacher last year, and that is exactly how he got through the year, was his mentors.
So, I wanna, I do wanna mention another one of our staff members here. Chris Farmer is our assistant superintendent for finance. So, he's really our expert on, but just a couple of things about Chris and Patrick Burnett, who's our head of HR. Last year, they spent a good part of the year looking at teacher salaries in the region and trying to develop a plan for addressing teacher salaries, and developed a three-year plan. And we, we went about a third of the way into that last year, and that is indeed a priority for the, for the board, for going, ongoing. And we've shared that information, of course, with our county administrator. So, as he plans, he knows what our expectations are. So, I wanna commend Chris and Patrick for really doing a whole lot of work last year to really try, really try to create an opportunity for us to be competitive. Tell you a quick story. I spent about four hours in schools today. I was at Anthony Burns for a couple of hours, and then I went to, I went to Colonial Forge for about an hour, and then I went to H.H. Pool for an hour. And then, when I was at, when I was at Colonial Forge today with Mr. Daniels, I walked into an English classroom, and there was a teacher there who was a long-term sub last year, who got a license, and now is teaching for us. I also met, I met a long-term sub at Anthony Burns today that has to take the Praxis test, and then will also be a teacher. So, I wanna mention those two things as things that don't get a lot of attention, but things that are real important strategies. We're very likely to keep those folks as teachers, because they sort of started in a non-teaching role, or in a substitute role, and then, you know, went and pursued their license and became teachers. And we wanna support that. You've heard the comment about tuition assistance. So, and then the other thing I wanna mention, that Ms. Randall mentioned, is we have something called Foundations in Teaching. That is our course for new teachers. So, those, for those of you who don't know, I'm about a year and a half into being in Stafford. So, I went to the Foundations in Teaching Orientation Program and sat with our new teachers for two days, 'cause I wanted to get a real understanding of how we support our new teachers. And what I learned is that we probably do more around supporting new teachers than most school divisions. They go through this FIT program for an entire year, and then they continue to be involved in it for the first five years of their teaching career. And that makes a significant difference, because they feel supported. And let's just be honest, I would argue the toughest job on the planet is teaching. So, it's not only getting folks here, but it's also providing that support. So, the FIT program, I think, is really one of our real retention strategies that we, where we really invest in our teachers. I did talk to one of our new teachers from Fairfax, who's in his second year in teaching, and he said if it weren't for this kind of program, he probably wouldn't be teaching. So, it's those kinds of initiatives that I think really make the difference.
And I can't say, though, that salary is not a part of it. So, I'm sure we're gonna hit that as we keep going around. But does the community value education? Does it want to pay our, our school staff? I think that's something that always is attractive, and I hope that that's something that, as a community, we begin to get behind. So, thank you. All right, who's next? I know there's always elementary volunteers. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. Brandy Quirk with Ferry Farm Elementary School, and the PTA treasurer. Since we got on the topic of retention and hiring, and then, Dr. Jones, you mentioned about substitutes. My concern this year has been, what I haven't seen, maybe I missed it, is marketing to the community with regards to substituting. I think, obviously, it's, it's been said that there's a chance of leveraging the community that is, you know, giving those hearts and helping hands, and then potentially being able to have that exposure and leverage off the possibility of becoming a teacher, a certified teacher. I do have a person that had an incident where they were really trying to get involved with the substitute program. Seemed like there was a little bit of lack of information available and response from that department. I really think there's an opportunity there, and I think, given my, being a parent at Ferry Farm, as well as Dixon Smith, and I do have the availability, and I really wanted to help. So, I did become a substitute teacher recently, and I know that there's such a gap and demand for it, that what I haven't quite seen is, just like those bus drivers, how can we also push the urgency to fill those spaces? For example, my son's class in Dixon Smith, they're running a life science class, because the teacher, there wasn't a sub. So, it was a virtual, that's fine, you know, we've gone through that concurrent thing. But if there are people out there that are willing, but they're not getting any response back, where's that sense of urgency? So, that we're not hindering someone's interest, and they just, they leave. The other thing that I've recently experienced, I experience it every day with, with the child at Dixon Smith that comes home to me and says, "The lunches." For me, this is equitability. We're blessed to have the ability to provide the meals at home before they, they go off to school. We can pack lunches, our family can pack lunches. But what I'm hearing with my child from Dixon Smith is, every day so far that he has been in school this year, his lunches are cold.
I see lots of nodding heads, so I can...
I would say this would also be specific to Ferry Farm as well. And I did have the opportunity today to be a substitute for our cafeteria hostess, unique in our situation, because we don't have a cafeteria. So, there's more of, you know, a sense of urgency with that timing, to be able to transport that food from the cafeteria to those classrooms. For me, what's important, having the background in food services and expediting food as a manager in restaurants. We have this word that says, "The food's dying in the window," which means there's a point where you can't put it out at the table. Well, for me, children come first, and it's a huge priority for me to make sure that every child is saying thing that every other child is receiving, whether they're in the school that I'm representing, Ferry Farm, as well as all the other schools in the county. I think, and then that would include waste, right? Because anything that's cold has to be trashed if the child's not eating it. And how can we look at the cost of making sure that we're not wasting any food? I know that's something that I've seen just in the volunteering over the years, or, excuse me, over the last year, we're not doing that food description, distribution at the stops like we were, but there was a lot of waste, a lot of waste. It's free food, so to speak, but the government's providing it. So, essentially, we're all paying for it. We're not going in particular specifics with schools, right? We're keeping this a countywide thing. All right. I think that's...
I figure we'll start there with the broad, 'cause I wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to, and so, if something that somebody has set ahead kind of resonates with you or with your PTO, just kinda say, "Hey, we have that one, too, and I wanna add this to the list." So, I'm just trying to keep the big topics kind of going, and then we can kind of delve into them. But I wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to, to respond. I think with HR and, and marketing, we can look into that. I'll, I'll kind of put that on there, 'cause I wanna, I do wanna make sure we get everybody, and we can look more into the lunches. And I, I saw some other heads nodding, so before we delve into that one, let's get some other insights. So, all right, who's next? Elementary.
My name is Amanda Grease, and I am the PTO president for Widewater Elementary. So, I've been on the PTO board as the president for three years now, and on five, five years otherwise. Some of the big things that we've noticed, the PTO board had to put out an extensive amount of money this year into, going into the maintenance of the outside of the building and the courtyards. These areas were nonusable locations. They were unsafe for the kids to be outside in these courtyards. We've invested, and we put approximately $8,000 into the outdoor maintenance of the school. My issue with that would be when you have to go through facilities maintenance to get approval, they often provide us with means of financial that we cannot afford. As we need to order this type of equipment to go outside, we need to order this. Now, we can order the same thing through a subsidiary component and pay much less, but they would prefer that we use whomever the county has. I don't think that's fair, when you're asking the PTO board to accommodate the cost, and you're not offering any financial restitution for that at all. To give an example of that, we paid, we found a outside company to come in and do the blacktops. They were going to seal them and fill the cracks, seal them and resurface them for $2,500, and add an additional coating of the blacktop. We were told we couldn't do that, but we had to pay the county the $2,500 as part of whatever fee they paid. So, we paid the county $2,500. They covered whatever the additional cost was for the contractor that they have to use, and they only filled the cracks and sealed it, and that was it. And now, we're back to square one again with the blacktop, where the cracks are out there, and kids can get hurt. So, we were trying to avoid that. And of course, this is where we're at. So, if we can find some way to navigate through that, if the county's not gonna pay it, or they don't have the funds to do that, then if the PTO is going to cover it, as long as it meets the safety guidelines, then I don't feel that we should have that much opposition to go through. So, that would be, one thing I would ask is that maybe consider, I don't know of how the outdoor facility maintenance funding goes, but maybe considering either A, hiring more facility maintenance management people that can handle the maintenance of the school, because one of the things as a parent, when I moved to a neighborhood, is I'm going to drive and look at that school, and I'm going to tell you, some of them look very scary. You cannot see the parking lots, the lines in our parking lot, the curbing. It was to the point where, and I got stopped, but I was out there, I bought yellow curb paint to go paint the yellow curb. Like, it's, it just looks terrible. It looks dead. It was, it's dreadful coming up there. And if, if our school, if we're supposed to have a sense of pride, the outside of the building needs to resemble the inside pride. One thing that we would like to see continue to happen is the support with the Chromebooks. It's been amazing that that weight was taken off of the PTOs, and as being something that's done by the county, so we'd like to see that continue. Water bottle filling stations. Is there any, we, the PTO just paid for ours, we paid for five of them, but I still feel like, since that is something that we have to look at as far as the health goes, that the county should look at investing in those for all of the schools. They are very expensive. Five of them cost us almost $7,000, so they're very expensive. So, if we can look at somehow getting that in there. We wanted to talk about continuing the support with the paraprofessionals. There has been an amazing response within the school with having the additional paraprofessionals within the schools, helping the students, testing's improving, the morale's improving. It's just overall been very, very beneficial. So, keeping that going, I think, is extremely important. Full-time social workers in elementary schools. I know that they're in middle schools and high schools, I believe. We, okay, well, Karen had mentioned, we were talking about that, so that was something, just keeping them in the school, and just making sure that we can keep that available to the kids, that resource.
Can I, can I mention something there? I just wanna thank the board. That was something that, when Dr. Kizner introduced his budget, was not originally a part of the budget. The board asked that we extend that. So, we have the ratio to have one in every school, which mean, doesn't quite mean we have one in every school, but we at least have the staffing to do that, so.
Yes, it's incredible. So, that, thank you all for that. That's, it's been a lifesaver in many situations. One other thing is the bus cleaning. I know that, I'm not gonna talk about the staff retention, because I think everyone's kinda probably touched on that. But with the bus cleaning, the PTO has paid for that for the last several years. We paid $550 this year for our bus drivers to be able to clean our buses. I called the, the cleaning station that they usually go and use, and it's like $44 and some odd cents for them to wash their buses. So, I don't know if that's something that the county can look at doing. I know some of them end up paying it, and then some of them, I don't know where they wash it, but it gets done, I guess. And then, the only other thing was the...
This is Pam. I have a quick question. When you say county, do you mean the school system or Stafford County?
Stafford County. Does not pay for the, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Pam, by the way, sorry. And then also, one last thing is the movie licensure. That was something that was brought up the last time, and we kind of never really got onto it, 'cause COVID stepped in the matter, so we never really got to focus on that. But right now, the PTOs currently cover that cost, and it's for the entire school. So, I'm not sure if that's something that can be looked at and to inquire and put that in the budget as well. Those usually run about $1,000, if not more, depending on if you get the indoor, outdoor, or just the indoor. Right now, thankfully, they're offering the outdoor free until December, so we are utilizing that tomorrow. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do at Widewater. It's, it's really remarkable. I know how much, how hard the PTO there has worked on the exterior. We have a running three-R project list, and often, because we have so many repairs and maintenance that are, and when we triage, we have to do interior and health and safety first. And, but I agree, you know, the schools are community schools, they're part of the community, and in order to have, for students to have pride in their schools, it's nice when they look good. So, I think it's definitely something that we will, you know, we've always talked about it as part of our budget plans. It's just unfortunately, other, other things often interfere. But thank you for everything you've done there.
The movie licenses, oh my goodness. I'm old. And this was, the movie licenses was brought up at that point, too. So, I mean, that is something, I think, even that this, it's something we can look at, 'cause I remember us deciding, should we renew it for three years? Oh, my gosh, there was like $500 of saving. I, I mean, I remember agonizing over that, or at that point, Chromebook, or carts of stuff. One thing, and I know that we've talked some about it, for some of the outdoor things at the schools, or some of that, I can tell you, there's a lot of community groups, and even, I mean, I know it through some of my church connections, but also Boy Scouts, other things. And I don't know how we can put people in contact with some of those groups, but I mean, I'm just throwing out sort of ideas, 'cause I know one year they did. Yep?
I actually was gonna mention this, kind of by, for, we just gave, we actually split the costs between us and our Girl Scouts, and it was part of their, like, program that they have to do, and do that.
It's a great way to do it.
For half of the paint, we give the other half, and they can, and they put our blacktop and stuff, and freshen everything up. Thank you for the beginning of the year, and it was wonderful. So, not only did it help the Girl Scout troop earn their, whatever they needed to earn, but it gave our blacktop some much-needed paint and curbs. So, it was, and they did a great job. Good job.
Great. 'Cause I do think there's a lot of community partners that want to get involved. Now, there's not, some projects they can't do, I understand that. But I'm just, I'm just throwing out, and not that you haven't explored those, but I'm just also, I remember when we used to have a PTO board, we used to meet once or twi, well, every two months, we would meet at the library and share ideas. And I, I remember that one, too. So, just something to always think about, because it also, as she was saying, may meet another need for, for somebody else. But yes, maintenance is...
Real challenge.
It's a challenge with so many of the things. So, I'm gonna go to a next elementary person, and then, like I said, we'll have some broad ones. All right, excellent.
Hi, my name is Fahima. I'm from Anthony Burns Elementary. I'm a co-president there. This is my third year on the executive board and fourth year working with Anthony Burns. We were, we were mentioning this two years ago, and I know a lot of the schools were mentioning it, too, about getting some shade in the back, and we looked into it as the PTO in 2019, and we came out that the budget would come out to almost $50,000 to build a permanent structure that was low maintenance, and it would be safe and all that stuff. We looked into all that. We tried to go through Eagle Scout even, you know, try to do it as their, it just didn't work out, and then school shut down, and we couldn't do it. We had Mr. Anderson come out and do the whole, and Stacy Genji come out and do their survey and everything. We were just wondering, we were told that this was gonna be an ongoing thing in the future budget, and I was wondering if that's still kept on budget to get some shade for the kids. We looked into all different, you know, I researched it really well for a couple of months, and using, like, sale covers and things, those are not doable at all. They're not low maintenance at all, and they're only good for about five years, you know? What if PTO can't cover it in five years? So, is, I would hope that you guys going forward would really focus on that for the kids, because, you know, we start in the middle of August, or beginning of August. It's pretty bad. I see my kids come out of the playground, they're like red in the face, and yeah, there's no shade. The only part of the shade, the other day, I was talking to a teacher, was against the wall of the building, and they can't even stand there, because there's a door there, and they can't have doors swinging open and hitting children. So, they really don't have any space. Besides that, I know you were saying that outdoor is secondary to the indoor safety and everything, but in our school, we are backed into the neighborhood, and we, our back of the school is pretty big, and though there's fencing on the 95 side, there's no fencing going into the neighborhood side, and it's very hilly. We have some friends who are runners, and sometimes when they go out there, it's a little dangerous for them. So, unless somebody is always on them, instead of letting them run around and, you know, be kids and enjoy outdoors, it's really hard to keep that into a smaller space. We were really hoping, and I know our wonderful principal was trying for our school to get some fencing, just on that side. We've been asking for it for a couple of years. Is there any way that could push up as a priority for our school? Would be really appreciated. So, those are the two things. We're really blessed to have a school that, so far, we're good, otherwise. So, if you guys can please make that a priority. And I know the mowing is also a problem, because they come whenever. Sometimes the grass is so tall, like, I'm tempted to bring my weed rocker, or whatever I have at home, to kind of cut the grass, 'cause it looks terrible. And, and like she said, it was, you know, if you wanna have pride inside, you have to have pride outside. So, we'd really like a normal schedule of mowing for our school as well. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Jones gets to go back to Anthony Burns, 'cause I, I would say, and I, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but fencing and that, that is a safety issue, 'cause I do know we have some friends that tend to take off when you see a open space. So, that would be one, and Dr., just maybe we can, if that's something that we could maybe at least have looked at, and, 'cause I know that's something that a lot of times does come out of here, 'cause if there are specific things to schools, we can certainly try and make sure. But fencing in certain areas, I know, is something that we should look at. Yes, the shade is very expensive. I don't know if Raki Run is here, 'cause I know the three years we were working on that one. I think one of the main things is the playgrounds... I think one of the main things is the playgrounds are on a cyclical maintenance, but like everything else, the emergencies take over. But maybe we can make sure that the renovation ones also includes a look at shading part of it. It may not get to be the whole thing, may have to be in chunks, but maybe we could look at when those, because it's on a cyclical update or something that having the shade looked at would be a possible way. So I don't know, ladies, certainly for you, but that would be my suggestion.
Some of these things that are being mentioned here, and like Mrs. Hazard said, Dr. Warner and I both serve on the Finance and Budget Committee for the school board. And so some of what you're saying, I'm putting, and I know Dr. Warner, too, we take a lot of notes, are putting things on FABC to bring up into our committee. So don't think that we're, if we're not responding, we're putting it on there so that we can talk about it in our Finance and Budget Committee. Because this is very helpful to us, to hear the priorities, especially coming out of, you know, a COVID year where we weren't in our schools very much or using very much of it, to know how it coming back, you know, did the priorities shift? Did the things that you need change? It's, it's very good to hear, no, that's still there, that's still a priority. So it's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, who's our next elementary? Who's up? All right, volunteer.
Hi, I'm Julie Cardello. I'm the PTA President at Hartwood Elementary. We also have a shade problem. Holly knows this week, we have a huge maintenance problem at the school. Couple of times a year, our toilets stop working, because the alarms go off. And we also have an incredibly leaky roof in the building. So while I know budget concerns, those are, I mean, to me, I happened to be in the building when the toilets were not working. And I said, if this was a restaurant, it would be shut down for the day. And the fact that our kids, this was 11:30, and they were being told to use the bathroom and not to flush, I had a huge problem with that. And I understood, you know, I wasn't angry at anybody as much as I was like, if this was a restaurant, it would be shut down. And we're asking our children and our teachers to spend the rest of the day in this building, where, and it only turned out that it was like an hour. I mean, teachers were leaving the building to go to people's homes to go to the bathroom. So that should never, ever, ever happen in a school. And I know it's not the first time.
I do want to say, currently, we have design plans being written for Hartwood and for Drew Middle School, because both of them have huge maintenance problems. But because of, we're trying to consolidate costs, and we don't want to necessarily replace, you know, the roof, fix the roof, and then discover, oh, we fixed it, now we're going to, with our design plan, we're going to have to redo it. So we're trying to implement a strategy for, for repairing some of these things. But we want a big picture, so that we know what needs to be replaced, what, what we can work on, and how we can maybe do it in phases. But I realize that Hartwood, I have talked to Ms. Hazard a number of mornings. And I appreciate that it has been a disaster there. We are working on it. As a matter of fact, I believe that we will be discussing the design plans. I think you're bringing this up for the board meeting Tuesday, aren't you? Or an update?
I don't think so, not on the design plans, but just in general.
It will be brought up in October at the, at the FABC. So this will be, we will be, we have been constantly reminding about these things, because I know that as the year progresses, we've, we've, a lot of these problems have been exacerbated, and we need to get them, we need to start working on addressing them.
And Julie, the roof project may, has been on, was to be funded this year.
Yes, I did hear that.
And so I, I kind of hope, well, I am hopeful that the roof needs to be fixed, no matter what the future plans are. And I think that that's something I would want to double-check with Mr. Anderson. But I understand we have had difficult water issues at Hartwood. And again, if anybody hadn't seen my post, this is the reason that we do not want to keep schools and build schools in areas that are not within the urban services area, so that they can have public water, so. But that is what we have right now. I think the roof project is still going to be moving forward, because I, I'm not sure we can wait too much longer.
So one other thing that I'm sure a lot of other schools are experiencing, but we are like busting out of the seams. There is no more space for anything. I know we can't add on to Hartwood, but I, I don't know what the plan is for that. But I know we're not the only school that is, you know, I mean, there is no room to do anything extra. So.
I will say that we get a, at the end of September, the staff will have the final count of our schools, and it will be coming to us in October, because you're right, Hartwood is not the only one. And we will be looking at ways to help relieve the populations at several schools. So, and that will start in conversations in November, to bring before the, and have the public come and give us input as well, with a decision early part of next year.
There's still people coming. All right, who else? Elementary? Okay. Is there anyone online that is with our elementary leadership who'd like to chime in on any of these topics, individual school topics? Feel free to jump on, please.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hi, I'm Kat Dobson. I'm the secretary at Ferry Farm. And our school, as you know, has been undergoing an intense renovation, because it was super old. And that's great, but we are still struggling with renovation timelines and things were supposed to be done like almost a year ago now. And so we're trying to figure out if there's a timeline for that, what maybe the future will look like with that. Because we have teachers literally like at the very end of hallways, next to construction, not really knowing where they're going to be, if they're going to be displaced, if they have to move their entire classroom. So yeah, just maybe looking for some more information on that as it's kind of dragged on, you know, talking about curb appeal and that, that sort of thing. Like, part of the school looks really lovely and has been refurbished and renovated, but there's still like an extensive construction happening. So that was my main question.
So I can tell you, I, as one of the, well, the representative for Ferry Farm, yes, the renovation has gone on far too long. I've been there, I've toured it several times. Recently, staff gave us a timeline. And I think Dr. Jones said that he has something, or that could be shared with the, with the community there, so that they can be sort of in the know of what things and when things will happen. So we will get that to you.
Yes? Okay.
You really, you really appreciate the information. Lack of full transparency here is, is, at this point, for me personally, we'll use the word negligent. Some of the board members know that I have been advocating for a rebuild for Ferry Farm for several years. Now I am an employee of Stafford County as a substitute. So prior to yesterday, when I took my first substitute position, Dr. Jones, I did send an email, and I have not followed up, because I know there have been other hot topics. So we really, 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 really need an answer. There's lots of running out. We just want to make sure that these children are coming in to a place that is healthy and safe, and is reflective of Stafford County Public Schools. This is not fair. It's, it's gone beyond. We have no parking lots. How are we going to provide services as a PTA to function with our monster mash? We have no cafeteria, that's not going to happen with the dance. Trunk or treat? I don't know. And I'll leave it at this. Please go by the school and check out where the current handicap, two handicap parking spaces are right now. And that timeline would be fantastic, super fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else online, or even in here with elementary, with anything, with elementary? All right, moving, do we have any of our head start?
Sorry, Fraser.
Oh, is there somebody? Okay, I'm sorry, I was too quick. Clarissa?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm not sure if you can see me, one second.
We can hear you, though.
Oh, okay, awesome. So I am from Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, and I am one of the treasurers there. And my partner and I have been serving for about three years. And one of the concerns that we do have are, the, I guess, the lack of, I'm not sure if there are any programs out there for the low-income families that we have at our school. We are always seeking ways to try to help our families at our school, especially during the holidays, whether it's providing them with food, gift cards, clothing, et cetera. So this year, we would like to help as much as possible. And we have discovered that our teachers are actually paying out of their pockets in covering for these expenses. So once we heard that, we believe as a PTO that it's just unfortunate that it has to come out of the teachers' pockets now, other than they have to pay additional for their school supplies and et cetera. So if there are any other, if there are any programs out there that can help our low-income families, I'd appreciate if you can let us know. Again, this is like my third year, so I'm still kind of new. Since COVID, we had a little break. And we're trying to see if there's any other way that we can help the low-income families financially, as far as like, not just giving them coats, but other ways, if that makes sense. Thank you.
And Clarissa, we'll make sure that the social workers reach out. They do have some really neat programs and people to connect. I'm going to look at Dr. Jones, you may have more ideas. But we can make sure that some reach out, because there's a lot of programs as we get into the holidays, food basket, different things that are sponsored by a lot of organizations. A lot of it is about, just like I said before, making sure that we know. I would work through either the social worker associated, but we can also make other connections. Is that okay? You want to fill any other?
Well, I know that, I know, for example, there's a couple of food co-ops in the, in the community that have worked very closely with our school. So we can certainly reach out to them.
Thank you.
All right. Any more elementary, at least on our first go-round? I want to make sure we hit every level first, and then if we come back around. All right, I'm going to look for middle school volunteers. Any middle school programs want to jump in? Any comments? Oh, start us off, ladies.
I don't know if I'm the only middle school representative here. But we actually have quite a few of the same concerns as elementary. Our number one concern, I'm Amelia Gillespie, PTO President at Heim this year. And so our biggest concern was teacher retention. I think we lost about 20 teachers last year, and some was inevitable with family moves, but some was definitely to Principaliam or Spotsylvania. And so we've gotten some fantastic new teachers. We're super excited about them, got a great staff going, but we would like to keep them. So whatever we can do, we would love that. And also, great new principal, we're very excited about. And so some of our other concerns were like water bottle filling stations, more of those accessible throughout the building. And I think it's a Heim-specific problem, but our fire alarm has been going off a lot. Like, I've, I'm not in the school a ton, but every time I'm there, it seems like it goes off. So I know that's being worked with maintenance, but that's a definite concern, because not only are the kids losing instructional time from the busing issues, we're also losing instructional time from this fire alarm going off. And then also, I know one more thing would be the budget for school supplies. I know the school supplies aren't nearly, we don't need nearly as many as elementary. But I know that our principal is really, wants to make sure that every student who needs those supplies is getting those supplies. So I think that was all that I wanted to cover.
Mr. Fulmer, would, we've had to shut down the drinking fountains. Would water bottle filling stations be something that we could apply federal funds to?
Oh, potentially. Could we allow the water filling stations to stay open? And the water fountains that is closed off?
Could we do that in, in Lewis, I mean, hydration is an issue?
Hydration is an issue for the kids, and since we have closed down the water fountains, would it be, could we use our funds then to go back and offer water bottle filling stations for all of our schools with our funds?
Yeah, potentially, it would qualify. And I would say water bottle filling stations are like a priority. We, we try to address those. It's not always as easy as it would seem. There's a lot involved with plumbing. It's not just taking a water fountain out and putting a water filling station in. So sometimes a lot more involved. And it's not necessarily, you know, the cost. We can, we can handle the cost of a few thousand dollars more. But sometimes it's either not feasible or involves a lot of different plumbing. So, but it is something we've looked into. It's kind of been a priority for a couple of years. But potentially would be, could be federally funded, supported.
Thank you.
All right. And I know that it looks like the fire alarm is on people's, so we don't have the water and you have the alarm.
I know that, excuse me, I, I do want to say that I know that several of fire alarm systems are on our 3R project for repairs. So I'm not sure if Heim is one of them, but I know that at least two of our schools have that scheduled for, for repairs. So I will double-check on that one.
And Dr. Jones, did we do, do we have school supplies from, like, when we do the, pack the bus over the summer? Do we have those supplies available that if a school reaches out to central office, they can get them?
As far as I know, we do.
I can also say there are other organizations that reach out to me that they mid-year want to know, where can we, if, do we need to do another set of backpacks, those kinds of things? I'll make sure that I get Cheryl's name, because I can put some people in contact with you. So make sure that Ms. Paul Hazers, because there's some organizations that already have said, what do we need to do next? You are in the right place.
Dr. Jones, this is, this is Kristen McKinney Nash, Family Engagement Specialist for Stafford County. I just wanted to chime in and say, we have a room full of supplies. We had donations dropped off just last Friday. So any principal or student that's in need, if they can contact myself or Hunter, then we can make sure that happens.
Yeah, that's Kristen or Hunter Berry.
Kristen McKinney Nash or Hunter Berry, either one of us.
And I would suggest, too, to the, to you all, if there are specific needs that you see in your school that, you know, the public wants to give the right things, too. So working with Ms. McKinney Nash and Hunter to make sure, hey, let's make sure we've got the right stuff that our kids need. So, all right. Do we have any more middle schools willing to jump up and jump in? Anybody online, middle school? Okay, go ahead.
No, my hand should be down, I don't know why I thought.
Okay. My name is Amy Gukin, and I am the PTO President at Ronnie Thompson. And I also work there in the library. And my principal has given ideas about upgrading classroom furniture. I'm not sure if it's by grade level or the entire building, but different, you know, tables and children's seats and things like that. The second thing is continuing to modernize the library catalog. And also supporting a growing number of instructional software subscriptions. Those are very expensive. And he did not put it on my list, but I would suggest a new roof as well. We have several leaks every time it rains, all over the building. That's it.
Thank you. We will check on your position on the 3R list as well. I know we have a number of roofs that need to be replaced, too. There's a whole list of them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Drew. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm Jessica Terman. I'm secretary with the Drew PTO. I wanted to, of course, just go ahead and echo the retention and recruiting. One point I would like to make specific to something that we've seen as a struggle at Drew is possibly an assistance program for new teachers struggling before their first paycheck. Um, you know, we had a couple of young new teachers reach out about free lunches, things that were available last year, and I know they were under probably a different grant with COVID. But, you know, I, I do know that they have to kind of wait that whole time and that's a struggle in the beginning. So if that's something available, it's just something fresh on our mind because we, you know, we saw it firsthand. Um, also, we, of course, uh, like everybody else mentioned, busting at the seams. We have new neighborhoods going up all over. We know we have transportation issues. I know that's a huge concern for probably everybody tonight. One thing that we have had parents mention is specifically for Drew, we are not walkable, really. It's, it's not a safe thing. There's no sidewalks, there's no cross, and I know that's route one, so to have a, a cross there would be quite an endeavor. No crossing in guards, but there are communities, there's really only one that has the trail leading up to the school that is potentially walkable, but there are communities close by that would be if that was, you know, something that was a priority. And we just wanted to note that, you know, when we talk about the fact that, you know, we need new schools, just that hopefully them being walkable would be a, a very huge priority to try and alleviate some of this bus transportation problem. And then, um, a couple others is we know that social emotional learning has been more of an emphasis this year. We appreciate what our school has done with RAM time and trying to get kids to reach out because COVID's been really hard mentally on these kids and I don't think they all know how to open up about that. Uh, we do think that it would be nice to have some training for staff to kind of better manage the social emotional side in the classroom. So rather than just have an outside portion where, okay, this is where we can talk about this, you know, there's going to be times in the classroom where it needs to be dealt with. And I know middle school, middle school's a hard age already, so I think that training would be well-used. And we also wanted to highlight, um, maybe a curriculum specifically to improve executive function in our middle schoolers, their organization and study skills. It's a transitional period and it's kind of, you know, we've been transitioning out of agendas and onto canvas and there's a little bit of a gap there in helping them to organize and keep their thoughts kind of in line. I, I'm sure you guys are aware of our maintenance issues, so.
You're on the list.
I know, I know. So you've got that one. Thank you.
Drew and Hartwood are both currently have, under design plans.
Right. Awesome. Thank you.
I really am intrigued by the executive function, because when I went to school, we had a study skills session that was required in middle school. I had to take a speed reading class in high school, or it was part of like, uh, you know, and I have to say, I learned a lot. I mean, I didn't think that I did, you know, all that stuff. Um, I, I actually think that's a wonderful thing, just in general, to, to consider within the, the division. I know there's so many other demands on their time, but I will tell you, when you send them off to college and you find out how they manage their time. I have two very different children. I have an A and a Z. Um, so it's been very interesting to watch the organizational execution plan in, in college. I, I think that's, um, a wonderful idea. And with regard to the walking areas, that is something I have said to, and I would encourage you all to with your board of supervisors, if something is going in and the developer comes in and talks about, well, I'm going to give you this kind of stuff, say, I want walking trails. I want, um, if, if close enough to the school, to all of that be put in by the developer, because it is much harder, I will tell you, to put in later. Um, and that is something I've tried to encourage my supervisor and others, um, I was on the planning commission for a while. We always asked for it. I don't know if it ever got through to the end, but asking for that kind of, um, access upfront is when we need it.
So I have definitely been a proponent of the social emotional, because I feel like there's so many different things that have happened during the time when kids, some kids haven't been here for a year and a half, but there's definitely been a lot of things that have happened either in their own personal life or in social media life, or even in the crazy world we're in right now. But, um, I, I definitely have asked for, um, more things to be done and that's one of the reasons we do have social workers in the schools, um, to help with that, but we've also added counselors in the school. And in, uh, just a couple of meetings ago, I had asked, you know, if they could speak to what types of services, because I'm looking for less of the kid coming out and seeking and more of the counselor pushing in and helping. Um, because sometimes I don't even think those kids know what to say or know what to ask. And so definitely social emotional is something that's, um, heavy on my mind. And like Ms. Hazard was talking about, the executive function, my kid has that issue. My third one, and, um, I was in actually a training meeting, uh, with his learning skills program yesterday about executive function and what parents can do to help and what the schools can do to help. Um, but I definitely feel like in some cases, we have got kids that were in fifth grade when COVID happened and now they're in seventh grade and so now they don't know how to do lockers and how to change classes and how to, they missed that year of sixth grade where that was all kind of part of the learning process. Same with the high school experience. They didn't finish eighth grade, but now all of a sudden they're sophomore in high school and the same, and it's a whole different transition issue. And I think that, you know, sometimes we just have to take a step back, go back to that basic building block. And executive function, I think, you know, yes, you typically see it more in ADHD-type children, but I don't think, they're not the exclusive ones that have that as an issue. Just even someone that can't figure out, um, you know, they've gone from regular school day to a full canvas to half canvas, half school. It's just a lot. So I, I agree that, um, it would be helpful if we could develop something that would help these kids, um, learn how to do school.
I have to agree. I, I taught freshman block classes in college and part of what we were doing is many students came to college totally unprepared because there's nobody telling them to get their homework done. There's nobody telling them that their papers due next Friday. They're not getting these daily reminders and it's really hard for them to make that transition in the first year. So we addressed it by teaching freshman block classes so that we had a cohort of students that we could help pull those skills along. And I, I think this is an excellent idea. I think these are all excellent ideas and I love the idea of training for our teachers to be able to bring social emotional, to address some of those social emotional issues in the classroom.
Thank you. All right. Who else in middle school? Any other middle schooler, uh, parents? All right, let's move to high school. Do we have any high school, um, PT, all right, get us started. Thanks.
My name is Denise Gobin and I am the secretary at Colonial Forge on the PTSO. I'm also the president of the Colonial Forge Music Boosters as well. We moved here in 2013. A military family. My son was a second grader and I was on the, uh, PT, I was PTO president at Whining Creek. And I've moved through the middle school. Now I'm at the high school. I have a senior and I have a sophomore now. That second grader is a sophomore. I've been coming to the SPAC meetings and every other meeting that they would let me in, um, since then in 2013. And the question remains, when in the world is high school number six going to open up? Because the cost of it goes up every year that we don't build it and every year we still don't have enough money. And every year the kids are crammed into the high schools. The lunch schedule is insane. Some of these kids aren't eating until right before they go home. Um, and then they have to choke it down in 20 minutes. Um, of course, my high school boys can eat half a horse in 20 minutes. So they're saying, Mom, it's not a big deal, but it kind of is a big deal when, you know, their blood sugar is probably very low by the time they get something to eat. Um, as they all know, they don't have time to go to their locker, so they carry everything around with them. Um, and wearing the masks, it's kind of hard to shove a little something in your face as you walk from this class to the other. So, um, do we have any idea, will I still have children in high school when we finally break ground?
We are doing, you know, part of the holdup is that, you know, the board of supervisors has been very slow to get these processes in motion. We have submitted all the information that we have. High school number six has been a priority every year I've been on the board. Um, we have met with a planning group to, first of all, I want to say parents are part of all of our planning teams for textbook selection, for high school six, for, when Moncur was built, for new libraries. We always include parents and community members in our committees. So there's probably more transparency in Stafford County public schools than there is in the board of supervisors. You know what we're doing. You can find it online or you can participate in these committees and groups like we are tonight. High school six is being planned. Property has been selected. They are negotiating a purchase. We are at 97% capacity, I think, in our high schools. So by the time we get this finished, we'll probably be at 105%. So things are going to get worse before they get better.
And I'll just make the comment, um, I have lived this. Um, we have studied where to put this high school for like three years, then new people get on the board and say, well, no, maybe it needs to go here. Independent studies, our own, actually great staff that we have, have pinpointed where it needs to go. If people don't think that the addition of a new school will help us with transportation, they're crazy. Because I have, in my particular district in Hartwood, I have kids on buses for a long time and they're like, oh, that's a transportation problem. I said, even if we had miraculous straight line there, you're still 20 to 30, maybe 40 minutes and some of my families, an hour. And I get, they know that they live there and, and, and they get that, but at some point, we have to decide if we are going to be a community of a community school or a, a local school. We are growing. It is not stopping. I have, I am aware that, um, the Westlake community that is out in Hartwood, which is about 900 homes, may actually get its connection and its water and sewer soon. I don't really want to see them break ground before we break ground. Just, I want to be in that particular competition and I want to win. That one. There are other by right communities off of, um, Centerport Parkway, approximately, I think it's 400 on Centerport, uh, in Centerport Parkway, mixed use, but not mixed, mixed residential type. We have to, as a community, decide that the growth that's coming here, we have to catch up with the structure. Unfortunately, there has not been much built. The last brand-new school, brand-new absolute, um, is just, I mean, no, just capacity, not replacing a school that we, we had to rebuild. Would it be Shirley Heim? And I believe you all are 2008, if I'm. I thought Heim was after Mountain View. Okay. Well, it's still been over 10 to 12 years, because, um, Mountain View was 10 years old. Okay, so it's around that ti, but, okay. If any of you have seen the census data, how much we grew during that period, we didn't have any new, brand-new schools adding capacity. So I think this community is going to have to decide and I will put it out there, since I'm leaving the board, I'm not putting this on these ladies who will be here. We need a bond referendum to get this stuff built. Every bond referendum, I believe that was on the ballots in the last two years, or at least last year of schools, guess what projects are on there? They're all schools and road projects. I'm not saying other project. It's a combination. We need both. And I really hope this community will say, we do need to do that because we are bursting at the seams. We also have our maintenance as we continue to talk. Um, as it moves forward, there's going to have to be pressure, um, to say, when people say that school's expensive, it is expensive, but guess what else is expensive? Having kids crammed into classrooms, running to things, there is a cost there. I get that it's not on a piece of paper, but it is on a piece of paper in my mind. So I would just continue that we need to keep pushing, that there is an expense. But we also live in a community that is growing and growing. Where is the money going? So, thank you though.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I would, uh, all the, the PTO that says, you know, like the socio-emotional aspects, especially with the high schoolers, you know, the COVID, that was tough. A lot of the kids really struggled in the virtual and then a lot of them are struggling just to come back to school because they were virtual for so long. I'm seeing that a lot. I spend a lot of time at this high school and I see that a lot in the kids. Um, so I worry about them, but I'm glad that we do have some resources there and the counselors and the social workers that are there to help them. Um, and just to say thanks, um, because I have a senior and a sophomore. I'll still be around as long as they'll let me stay on the SPAC and whatever else. Um, but I appreciate the fact that we are invited to have a conversation with you all and to be a part of the discussion. So thanks.
Can I add one other perspective? Uh, um, I've had this conversation with Mr. Fulmer. We have to stop thinking of house, of new schools as expenses. They're investments. They're going to be here for 50, 60, 70 years. So I think sometimes how we frame, to frame the investment rather than, because it's not an expense. If you think about what you pay for a school over 70 years or 60 years, it's not that much money.
And I would also just say, okay, I'm going to stop. Okay, I can't stop myself yet. It's okay. But what you're talking about with virtual, there was sort of a theme that this board heard from funding bodies of, well, why not virtual high school? That'll save us. Please, if that comes up again, please fight for your kids. They don't want to be virtual in, in a virtual high school. I think there is the emotional, that is not the way to save money. It is not the way to save money.
With harsh reality, even, even if you, even if you, there's no such thing as an all-virtual high school. There are going to be moments and opportunities when kids have to come to school, even if they don't come every day and the last 18 months have proved that. So we're never gonna, at least I don't think in my life, not, gonna have a fully virtual high school.
I hope we never do.
It's good to see your reaction to that, because when we say it sometimes, um, in, in other venues, it's, it's not always received as positively. So to sit in amongst an audience of parents who have, you know, um, a different or a common viewpoint is helpful to us. So I appreciate the nodding heads.
I do want to, um, piggyback on what Ms. Hazard said. It's in choosing the location for high school six, we did a lot of research. And one of the things we looked at is how that would impact the other high schools that are already existed. It would actually condense and consolidate their attendance zones, which would, would, would impact transportation and capacity. So all those things are, are critical and why we need these things. And like Dr. Jones says, this is an investment in our community. You cannot build a residential community and invite all this construction of new houses and then not build the infrastructure that we need to support it.
Is there, are there any other high school, um, yes? You mean you're going to graduate this year?
No, I'm a freshman, but it's my fourth kid.
Oh, good.
So our big issue is fundraising. Um, we're hoping we can have prom this year and we put on after-prom. And typically we do a bingo to fund our prom, our after-prom and then the kids buy tickets and that buys, pays for all of our prizes. Um, but we were told we couldn't do bingo this year. So fundraising is a big issue for us for those kind of things. Of course, the kids are very disappointed about not having homecoming dances, so parents apparently are putting one on, just like we did prom. Kind of seems like the school is just trying to shirk responsibility. Um, that's my personal, that's not a PTO thing. But there were a couple other issues that came up that I've heard from people. One is if your child is sick, they cannot do the hybrid thing that is available to kids who have COVID. So kids are like, parents are like, do I send my sick kid to school? Because otherwise you get nasty grooms, um, if you miss too many days. But this, you know, but I was like, keep your sick kids home, but if it's not COVID, send them to school. I don't know. So it was a little bit of mixed messaging. And then one thing I found interesting when she talked about salaries, I didn't hear anybody mention the fact that our counties to the north of us get extra money from Richmond to pay their teachers. And I really think that's something you guys need to push and encourage everybody to push our representatives down in Richmond to add us to that extra locality base. Because we're all giving extra money to our competitors, which I just found that interesting. And then I just had a thing about this transportation. And then I just had a thing about this transportation that would help. My child's bus, I got calls for a week saying it was going to be late. It wasn't late. Now, all of a sudden, his bus has, his driver has a second load before their run. So it would be helpful if the transportation, knowing this driver now has a second run, would change our pickup times, so we could see. Even if it's after school starts, that would also give you guys better data if we actually had realistic things, and then kids aren't standing out there for an hour. I've driven him every day, because he's like, I don't know where the bus is, and being late, for some reason bothers him. I'm like, it's like free time off of school, but he doesn't appear, he likes school. But yeah, so if we could just have more help with, because we raise money for scholarships for our kids, and last year, we took our after-prom money we had raised for the previous year and did a senior raffle, because those kids didn't get it for juniors or seniors. So that would be, in addition to all the other stuff that everybody.
I'm going to defer on the fundraising. I was going to look at Mr. Fulmer, but he may be like going, I'm not going to take that one. If, on the fundraising inability to do bingo, is that something?
Do fundraising, it might be limited based on making sure it's a safe environment as far as social distancing. Bingo is allowed, actually, as a school division, we are not allowed to do bingo, but nonprofits can, which include the PTOs, PTAs, and boosters.
Okay, I have a recommendation for your bingo, because we're doing that at Widewater. We are doing car bingo. So we partnered with a local church who has a radio station. They are going to be calling, we are going to be calling the numbers over the radio station, and when the car, so we're doing like pizzas where you can order a whole pizza, and you have the little combo, you come up, you pick it up, you go back to your family sits in the car. When you get a bingo, you honk your horn, flash your lights. Fundraise. The kids have a blast doing it, so that's a way around COVID, just like we're doing outdoor movie night tomorrow. There's ways that you can do it. We just had to really be creative. But the kids are really excited about the car bingo, so that might be a way to fundraise, because the high schools have huge parking lots, so.
Can I?
Want to get that out there.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, too, about fundraising? I know my sister-in-law does a lot of Alzheimer's fundraising, and they've done online raffles and online silent auctions and other things, so that you can just take your prizes, put them online, and people bid on them, and then that becomes your fundraiser. Then you're still getting that opportunity without having to do the personal face-to-face.
I will not make any predictions. I would, I would hope our kids get prom this year. I would hope, but.
So let me answer, let me address an issue before I come to prom. Okay. So the issue of accessing virtual learning if you're sick. The guidance that has been given to schools is this, why don't we do what's best for that particular child? So that, so that's the general guide. So what I, so if that's happening, what I would have you, that parents should contact, in this case, Mr. Hicks, and have a conversation with Mr. Hicks about how to do that. Okay, okay. But I would have them contact the school principal. The general guidance that's been given to schools is, let's do what's best for the child, because every single child's circumstances are going to be different. Now, I'm going to take a little bit of risk here, because you asked an extremely difficult question about, about prom. And there are a lot of factors. And as you know, it's like, one factor we've just heard is that there is, there's a new, there's a vaccine for children ages five to eleven. So I think a lot of what happens with the ability to do prom is going to be the extent to which students are vaccinated or not. Without, but, you know, taking the politics out of it. I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting that. What I am suggesting is that, is that schools have to be able to do a couple of things. Number one, we have to be able to continue mitigation strategies. We have to be able to do contact tracing. So the prom can only be as good as our ability to do mitigation strategies. So if you can design a prom that allows us to be able to contract trace where students are, then you probably can have a prom. If you're going to do a traditional prom, where you don't do that, it's probably going to be difficult.
And I think it's just like so much with COVID, unfortunately, and this year. We can't over-promise. I never thought that this opening of school with the Delta, I never, I will tell you, maybe I'm naive, I was really hoping that this meeting, when we were meeting tonight, we may not have had masks, we didn't have to be, I mean, I really was thinking that way last spring. So it is always going to be fluid, and the hardest thing is, is the schools are responsible for your students when we are on, when they are on our property.
And so we, we consult with the, we have, we meet with the Virginia Department of Health every Tuesday, with the Rappahannock Area Health Department. We meet with them every Tuesday, and we seek guidance from them, and they are discouraging large gatherings. They're discouraging that. The criteria they use is the community transmission rate. And so right now, the community transmission rate in Stafford is high. There are two school divisions in our, in our region that have actually revised their quarantine procedures, in Spotsylvania and King George. And I know on our call this Tuesday, what they said at the RA, RAHD is, they're actually looking to see if those school divisions are going to see increases in school transmission rates because of the revised quarantine procedures that those school divisions are going to follow. Excuse me? They switched to ten days.
They switched to the CDC guideline, other part of the CDC guidelines.
So the CDC guidance is seven days, ten days, and fourteen days, with fourteen days being the goal standard. So both of those school divisions have done that for about a week now. So again, as you know, we're monitoring this every, every single week. So we're also looking to see what happens in Spotsylvania and King George in terms of in-school transmission rates. What we know right now is, even though the community transmission rates are high, our in-school transmission rates remain relatively low. And we think quarantining, again, your question was about the prom, but we think some of the mitigation strategies, we believe, are working.
They don't have to wear masks, and they're not dropping dead.
Yeah. Well, we have to follow the state's guidance. The in-person, the new in-person law that was passed this year says, school divisions must follow CDC guidelines. That's the law.
But these kids are having a great time, as they should be. They're in high school. It's supposed to be the best four years of your life. I'm sorry, it's supposed to be, and it should be. So I'm thrilled to be there and see everybody there. But then you tell them they can't have a homecoming dance, or you tell them they can't have a prom. But they're, my son is wrestling. They're playing lacrosse. They're, they're, they're at the football games. It, the, it just doesn't line up. So trying to make sense of the regulations, I think, is what's throwing parents and frustrating parents and students alike, because there doesn't seem to be a defined consistency one way or the other. So, and I'm not saying I don't want the football games to go, because we're loving it, but, you know, I think that's why there's so much frustration, is because there doesn't seem to be any kind of standard across the board. It's based, it almost seems like a case-by-case or event-by-event basis, if that makes sense. I'm probably not saying that well.
My name's Melissa Delio. I'm from Brookline High School. I'm the PTO president. And we had even said, like, why couldn't they have an outdoor dance? You're doing an outdoor football game. And then we heard stuff like, well, we have to keep them apart. Well, they're, like she's saying, they're not apart when they're in the stands. And, I mean, we are mask wearers, you know, I, I'm totally, I want COVID to go away. I know we're in a high transmission area. But I think, like she's saying, like, there doesn't seem to be a, it seems like, while it's sports, it's okay, but nowhere else. So.
I mean, I do think some of the guidance that we are given and that is recommended can be looked at as inconsistent. The problem for us who sit here is we are looking at thirty thousand kids, families, who have a variety of circumstances. And we are charged with the safety of your students on our property. And believe me, it is something that keeps me up at night. It kept me up at night before COVID, for other reasons. This one keeps me up at night as well. I would like the success of this semester to lead us to great success come the spring. But I, and again, this is just me speaking. I don't want to get personally too far ahead, because I think a response that would pull us out of schools again because of certain things would be devastating. I, that's how I feel. Again, personally, I am much, I probably would like to do things somewhat differently for my, but I am also looking at my own situation. And I'm like, well, blah, blah, blah. There is a lot there, and I think we have worked very hard to stay in school. I think that one thing the schools, whether you liked it a lot last year, we tried to get kids back last year, more than any of our other county. If you went north, you are not in school. So I do think we are trying to get kids, but we want it safely, because I think what would be much more devastating if my child, and I am, I was upfront, my kids are now in college, that's a whole nother experience of, with COVID. But I think what the, one of the worst things that could happen is some outbreaks happen, and we have to close schools and go all virtual. I, I really would love to avoid that. Again, this is just me speaking, so I'm, I am saying that. But I will tell you, I think all of us, it is something that you don't sleep well at night. I can't even speak to Dr. Jones and for all those. But that is something, sometimes, yes, maybe we are being too cautious. I don't know the future. Like I said, I was thinking last year, when we got out, we would be sitting here tonight, maybe no masks, all sitting here, having homecoming dances, Monster Mash, trick-or-treat, all of it. I was really confident. And now, you know, I just feel like it's a very hard line.
I will say this, though, that in looking at, you know, because we get data, too, from Dr. Jones and from other counties and stuff, and for the amount of exhaustion and frustration and things like that within our county, our students and our staff and our numbers in comparison even to other counties in our districts are really good. So, I mean, as frustrating as those things can be, you know, kudos for the sacrifice, because we're in school, we are full-time, we are five days, and, you know, listening to how you guys can, you know, ingeniously put things together for your families, to bring the families back in, that is huge and important to bringing back community and laying foundations for the social, emotional. The fact that the high schools are still having their Friday night lights, that is huge for those kids. Would it love, would they love to go one step further and have homecomings? Absolutely. But having seen even, you know, some of the things alternatively that the schools are figuring out, that the parents are working out, you know, be whatever it is, I just think that, you know, kudos to the parents for seeing there needs to be a way forward for our elementary school communities, our middle school communities, our high school communities, and you're doing it. And, you know, for me, I just, I can't thank you enough, because you are the actual plug-in piece that we were missing last year for social, emotional support. And that's what you're providing by bringing back book fairs and dances and, you know, some fundraising opportunities or outdoor, you're figuring it out, and we just can't thank you enough, because you're a resource that we can't provide, and you are. So like I said, our, our division is doing very well. And, and it's, it's all in part to everyone doing something and then going an extra mile to make it better. So, thank you.
So I just, I had a couple other questions. The one, you were saying something, sir, about contact tracing. How does that, like, work in high schools? Is it on the schools to contact trace? Like you were saying, if you had, if they did the contact tracing, it would make those things easier.
Yeah, our nursing staff are the ones that lead that, the contact tracing in each of our schools, high school.
Okay, but like you were saying something about, maybe I misunderstood you, but something about contact tracing, if you could do more of it, it would maybe enable things like, like a dance to take place just for a sec. But what, does the school do the contact tracing, or just the nurses?
The school, the school, well, nurses are, is part of the school, do contact tracing. That, that is a high school, that is a high school principal-level decision. It's not a division decision.
No, and I totally, really, we're a very, we are a very safe family, and I appreciate everything you have done, and I'm not, I'm just curious, you know. My other question, though, about the movie license, I think that the reason we had, we just were asked what we spent fundraising money on, and that was something that we spent our fundraising money on in the past. And there was some confusion, I guess, because some people thought maybe the county was providing these licenses. To my knowledge, the county doesn't, correct? I just want to make that clear, because I have some board members now that are kind of like, well, maybe we shouldn't be buying the license. I mean, so I'm just curious. The county does not purchase those licenses, correct?
They haven't ever since I was here, but I do know at one point, we had asked, gosh, this is maybe pre-board, so it's been a while, of whether, if the county was able to purchase it at a greater savings rate for thirty-two license, or whatever licenses.
I'm whispering to Ms. Hazard. I'm wondering if we can do it through media services, because if you think about our media centers in schools, they purchase electronic materials. I, I don't know, but there's something we can investigate.
I don't mind buying it, it's just that we just want a clarification that we weren't, like, buying something we didn't need to buy, because it was already being provided or something, I guess is what I'm saying. Like, we were told from the library, and no, the county doesn't, but I just wanted to bring it up here, to put that to rest, finally, for our board.
Yep. Well, ten years ago, it was on the same thing, but that might be something, especially if there is a way to buy in bulk, because I remember we would agonize every year the whether we should buy it for a year or two years and save the two hundred bucks or something. I don't remember, it was something at the time.
And, and I'm assuming that everywhere in the state of Virginia, schools are run the same way in the, in the sense that there's, so I'm from Pennsylvania. So in Pennsylvania, we elect our school board, we vote for our superintendent, the schools have their own taxes, and the schools take care of their own money. In Virginia, nowhere in Virginia do they do that, correct? I think that's problem number one in Virginia. I've lived here for almost twenty years, and nothing changes. The Board of Supervisors, they just don't want to fund schools, period. They just don't want to do it. I've been to so many meetings over there, I've talked to supervisor, it's just, it's just never-ending. I mean, twenty years. I, I know. Ms. Hazard, I hear what you're saying. It's just, I'm sitting here listening to some of the things people are saying, and I'm like, wow, I remember that when I was in elementary school. It just doesn't change. And, I mean, I thank you for serving. You, you are wonderful. I don't, I don't know how you do it. You're wonderful.
Thank you. I do have one other group who, I don't know if I have anybody from our Head Start Policy Council, I want to make sure. Thank you. I thought, so I want to make sure that I recognize and hear the concerns or things that you all have going on. Sorry, it took me a while to loop around. I think we've gotten everybody, but, well, let me let her jump in, and we can go on. Thank you. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Kaylin Jennings Knight, the chairman at the Policy Council for North Star, Rising Star. So everything is going great, no concerns for anything. I just have just one thing, sharing on behalf of Ms. Massey there. They have an infant toddler classroom at Melch. They have an infant toddler classroom at Melchers that is available and E, early Head Start is supposed to be coming out with expansion funding. They have three available classrooms at Melcher that are not being used for ECSE classrooms at this time. And they need the early Head Start classroom in the future. They wanted to move those students to home base. Currently, we are serving twenty-eight pregnant women, infants and toddlers, and they would like to serve more ECSE toddlers in this program, as well as continuing to support our pregnant teens. They have a new teen mom who baby just started at North Star and she was able to return to high school last week. So, it's one of the things, I guess, to add in on behalf of Ms. Massey there. But thank you for allowing me to join. And Ashley Goodman, she's the vice chairman, she actually, I believe, logged off, so, but she was in the ten.
Mom here, Kaylin.
Oh, okay, okay. But yes, so thank you for having us here.
Always.
Thank you.
I don't know how much you all know about these wonderful two programs that we have. The purchase of the former Fredericksburg Christian has just really allowed our Head Start program. And I will let Dr. Warner, I know, do this, this is an area dear to my heart, as we know. Having, making, making sure that our kids start off early and well is really, really important. And so, if you know of families that could benefit from the program, make sure that they get those applications. I'm sorry, Dr. Warner, I'm doing your plug. It is, it was many years, but, but make sure, and even the program that was, you know, talked about, these are great community programs and we want to do the best by all our families. Dr. Warner, I'll give you yours because you're.
Oh, I just, I want to thank Ms. Knight and Ms. Goodman for being here tonight. One thing I've learned about Head Start and, is that it's a wraparound services. It helps prop up our families, it helps prop up our children, and it really makes a huge difference when our kids enter K through twelve education. And I just think that the, you know, I want to make sure that we have the resources for them because the benefit to the community in the long run is, is extraordinary. Thank you.
All right, any other schools who either, gosh, I thought of something that I didn't know or I thought of something I'd want to add or echo something, please jump on. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to address something that I got a text message and I remembered was one of the big issues that we have is a lot of the chairs for the teachers are broken. So the, we were looking at as a PTO and trying to order thirty bu, thirty more chairs for our teachers and they are, as you know, very costly. They run anywhere, the ones we were looking at run anywhere between eighty to like a hundred and ten dollars and that's just for your basic ergonomic chair. So just kind of one of those things. I also would like to thank the board. I know that it has been a very daunting task to deal with the political, political aspects of the mask wearing, but I really appreciate all of the efforts and things that you've done to ensure that our children stay in in-person learning. I think that is fundamentally, every parent's concern is ensuring that our children get the maximum education. I almost lost my daughter in two thousand and seventeen to the flu pandemic that was going around Stafford County. I don't know if anybody remembers that. She got flu A in December and flu B in February and then developed two somatary infections to where she literally deteriorated in two days in front of my face. So I appreciate the mitigation strategies that are in place because I can't do that again. So I know we all have different stories of, you know, how we look at the mask, but trust me when I say it's saving some of our young ones' life because I can't do that again. So as a mother, thank you, I know it's hard, especially with politics, ugh, being involved. Sorry, I hate politics, I work in it, which is really crazy, but. But I really, really say, want to say thank you. And I would like to reach out to these other PTO board, PTO and PTA board members because, you know, I have a hard time getting a hold of anyone, which is crazy. But I think working together, we can figure out mitigation strategies to maybe have a prom. There's ways to work around things. I was in the Marine Corps, so where there's a way, there's a way. And when we work together as a team, we can figure it out. So, you know, we can work, I can talk to Dr. Jones, we can work with the board members, we can, you know, hopefully figure something out. Like the car bingo at the high school would be awesome. And if you need other support from board members and order, PTOs and PTAs to make that happen, I'm a hundred percent on board. I think that's great, we should work together because COVID is giving us unusual circumstances to work around, but I think if we work together, we could really accomplish a lot of things and get our students what they need, especially our high school students. The things I remember are homecoming, prom, those, graduation, these are things that, those are those memories that are always there. So, you know, if we work together, I think we can figure out ways to, to get around some of those things.
And I will tell you that we used to have a PT, when I was doing PTA as well at Ferry Farm, it was a, there was a council that we could like work with and we had, I think we even had an email group, but, you know, then Facebook came out too, but yes, I'm old. But the other thing too is I will say, when my principal asked me, my, I was pregnant, I was, I just finished teaching high school at Brookpoint and I was home with my kids and I was doing daycare for other teachers' kids. And my principal said, you know what, I think you would be a great PTA president. And I am out to here going, really? But you don't say no to her. So I was like, sure. And of course, you all know, come August, September, you as a president feel like you are underwater with all of the startup things that have to happen with getting your calendars ready, getting, you know, getting people to sign up and join, your spirit where it is like you're underwater. And I thought, oh shoot, I'm quitting. And so I thought, okay, Susan, option B, grow up. And so I reached out to, because I was at Ferry Farm, I reached out to Conway, Grafton and Falmouth. And I contacted their presidents and said, you need to meet with me or I quit. And they did. And we met for three, like three months. They had the best ideas for me because I had nothing. The entire board was gone, it was me, all new. I was building, it was so hard. But when I sat with them and they're like, I'm like, nobody comes to my meetings. We have to associate a meeting with an event if you want them to come. Oh, you know, it was like just little things that, but yes, you guys are an amazing support system for each other. By all means use it and of course, we'd love to come, invite us, you know, and.
Don't hit them on Tuesday nights.
There's that. We have another job on Tuesdays, don't call us. But, but yeah, I mean, I, I just think, like I said, you are the missing piece that we missed so much last year for the kids and for the families, you know, that are maybe working and they can't do what you're doing, but they do appreciate what you're doing and so do I. So, but I will tell you, yes, by all means, reach out to each other.
Do you all have a list to be able to reach each other? Okay, well, and, and Missy, can, are you allowed to share it?
Finance gets a list together of all the officers, names, emails and phone numbers.
Go ahead.
You got this, that's what we're here to say. But really, meet together if you can. And the nice thing is, is now this Zoom thing, we used to meet at the library, quarter library, and we would get that one big room and we'd all sit around it. I always came out with ideas and I remember the one that I took back at Margaret Brunt and it's one that I'm actually really proud of is always at the end of the prior year, we found out maybe part of the fit program too is the support of the PTO for the new teachers. We bought their lunch and actually breakfast, I think, for the first month of school. You did it, but you did it. You did it. The next year is better and, and easier.
Yeah.
Do we create a list?
You need, you have so many people here that have been working elementary on up.
They're going to come to you, high five at the end, I'm going to.
Create a list, okay.
Perfect, perfect.
Let me go to the lady that I don't think you've spoken yet, so jump in and then I'll move forward.
I'm Jessica Whitley, I'm at Garrisonville. I just want to let you know you're our neighbors. Reach out, we're, we're more than willing to help you out. Definitely come talk to me, we, we'll help you out.
I help support and run the yearbook at Ferry Farm Elementary and when we went into the original lockdown in twenty nineteen, that was a scramble to get that book done. It was absolutely imperative that I got it done with the team that we had because it really is a memory box for those kids. For me, I had a fifth grader, so it was something else and the teachers rallied. When the new year came, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I reached out to Dr. Kizner because I photograph and that new policy that came out that said, no digital screenshots, no, 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 I was like, no, wait, we, we got to have a yearbook. Like this is something that we do for these kids, but something that was bought up by PTO at Stafford High School fundraising. For Ferry Farm Elementary, our yearbook is a fundraiser, legitimate fundraiser. I know, working with our Life Touch partner, that's our, our vendor, our partner, in conversations we've had, she's spoken to other people and I know there were a lot of struggles with other schools in our division with not being able to do a yearbook or can you even make money from it? I can tell you from the last two years that I've been the lead, that we have raised for each of those two years nearly a thousand dollars in yearbook sales. This last year, we reached that goal and that included still being able to purchase yearbooks for all of our teachers as well as our LS and specialist. How do you do it? You just got to really make the connection with your teachers, having the support of your administration at the building. But I know there, there were times over the course of the last year and a half that word was, and just hearsay for me, that you can't make money on a yearbook, you absolutely can, you just got, you know, it is a business, but so is our, our PTAs and PTOs, right? So there is a way to run it. I'm always here to help if you, anyone needs any ideas with that.
We will try and facilitate that list.
Yeah, the high school was co-curricular.
That's right. So I'm going to let, are there any other random comments? I'm going to let each of the board members and Dr. Jones say something as well, but I think we can certainly help facilitate. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to come back.
Hi, my name's Kim Correa, I'm from Brookpoint High School and the vice president there. It was more to support our new hires especially, but I've heard that the staff have to pay for their lunches, although it's free for our students, they still have to pay. And is that something that we can look at, especially for our new hires to maybe, you know, yeah, help them, not charge our staff. I mean, I think it's only three dollars or something, but that adds up, especially, you know, that maybe that just will send a message to say, we really do value you, we really do appreciate you, especially since I believe it's a government grant or something that maybe, you know, I don't think it would cost a lot of money for us to do that, but would go a long way. That was just all I had, thank you.
Yeah, we'd have to look into it. The one that comes from the federal government is child focused, so it is only for the feeding program, so we'd have to kind of get an idea, but doesn't mean it isn't something we can't at least look at and balance with all the other needs. But thank you for bringing it up.
I just want to say something we experienced recently with our Spirit Night at Chipotle. If anybody ever, like if your school is doing a Spirit Night and if you contact Anthony Burns, I'm more than happy to get our media person to put that on our Facebook so you get Anthony Burns people coming. And if you have a flyer that gets you that money, please do because I had that experience where a Stafford County worker, employee just happened to see our sign that night and went and used our flyers to, you know, get us money. So that's a way we can all support each other. So please feel free, anytime you have any kind of Spirit Night and you're raising money, please pass it to Anthony Burns, we'll post it and, you know, we'll come out to your Spirit Night and hopefully you get more money.
All right, anybody else? All right, closing comments. Dr. Warner, you want to, oh, sorry. Your agenda, I'm very happy to see the, sorry. Your per pupil expenditures, where you're looking to increase this once again, like for the past twenty years, like we've been at the bottom. So I really appreciate seeing that, good luck to you. These ladies are pushing, they're pushing that cart now. I pushed it for a while, so they're, they're ready to step in and, but that is something. If we had Pennsylvania's per pupil expenditure, I'm sure if anybody's seen some of the posts, I have done them before, we would have, I believe it's sixty million dollars more to spend. That'd be kind of helpful, just saying. Might be able to get those roofs done quicker and show the, but you really are part of that team to help us support our staff. Because do people do leave positions for money? I understand that. But I stayed in, but I stayed in a place that was less money, but I worked with the best people. I had, I worked, okay, our bosses were crazy, but we all didn't think we were, but we stayed there, so what's that saying? But these are some of the people I will never forget, we worked together. So it's, so your investment and commitment of time, and I know, I've been up late stuffing baggies with stuff that I'm like, does anybody know what this is? I don't know, we're, we're putting them in a baggies. Don't do the glitter, learned that the hard way. So you are a really important part of that team of why our staff stay. I love when I hear the teachers say, guess what our PTO did today? I see it posted all the time. You guys are great, you are part of that team of why we want them to stay in Stafford. We want to be resources to you, but you all are the best resources. Some of my ideas now, I mean, like I had paper tickets, I mean, like I, I'm old now, but I remember those nights, but I also remember the excitement and truly our communities are, are, I'm still a bobcat, I'm still a tiger and I'll be a wildcat. I just will be, I don't change because I was. I still have my spirit wear, not all of it, okay, I did. I did, I did do that, okay, I had a lot. But I actually washed it really nicely, put it back and gave it to our counselor and said, please give this to a needy student or whatever. And my kids did the same. We are on the ground, you are on the ground. I just can't, us, just, you all are awesome, we've all been there, so. Closing comments, ladies?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for coming. It's been a great turnout. You guys have offered some powerful insights, I think I like a lot of your ideas, but as Ms. Hazard said, you are the boots on the ground. And I know we all try to get to the schools, not just our schools, but I go to all the schools. I try to make sure because I believe that all of the schools in Stafford County should be good. And to do that, we need the investment from the Board of Supervisors. They need, they only account for forty percent of our funding. It is that investment, the money that we get through the Board of Supervisors that allows us to be competitive and allows us to make the investments in our three R projects and all the things that need to be done. And the more they continue to cut that funding, the harder it is for us to do it. We're always trying to do more with less. And I grant you that we need to be fiscally responsible and we really do try. We really, first of all, we'll go to jail if we ever spend our budget, so there's that, that's an incentive. But I just want to say, we see a lot of these problems that are there and, and we know they exist and we want to fix them. We, we added the social workers because we felt the social emotional learning, especially coming out of COVID, as we transition out of this was so critical. But I love the idea of adding training. I think that's an excellent idea, especially in the classroom. Help teachers spot some of the students that maybe need some additional help, give them tools to work with, I think that's really a great idea. You guys have presented us with some wonderful ways that we can enrich our schools and some of them aren't even necessarily that costly. But I think it's important for us to hear that because. But, I think it's important for us to hear that, because it gives, it's like, it's like that aha moment, oh, yeah, this makes sense, we can do this. So, thank you for coming, I really appreciate it, all levels, our Head Start people, elementary school, middle school, high school. I appreciate your commitment, especially you high school parents, because I realize, as your kids go through the system, the support from other parents tends to drop off, so I appreciate you being there. Thank you. And I too was a parent in PTO, but it was so long ago, it's difficult for me to remember, because my baby is like thirty-eight.
Well, my baby is seventeen, and I still feel old. But, I have to say though, that this is like one of my favorite nights, because it's just so nice to, you know, when we're sitting up there and parents come and talk to us, and we can't say anything back, I really appreciate dialogue. I feel like you give us things, but we can tell you things too. And, you know, where you might find something doesn't make sense, and maybe we don't find it makes sense either, or maybe we can tell you, oh, that's because. So, I really appreciate this evening, and you guys taking the time, and like I said, I'm so grateful that you all are back in business, because our families need you, our schools need you, our community needs you. And I'm just hoping that you guys help find each other, and especially these two young ladies who just jumped in and have a really big responsibility, and, and I just, I know you're going to be amazing and successful at this. I know it's going to feel like, who the heck signed me up for this? And, but you, you're going to, you're going to get so much back as well. My thing was, I never liked to be the one getting, you know, oh, thank you, you did, I was like, no, 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 no. I, my thanks was always seeing happy families, a full cafeteria, a full outside, you know, that always made me feel full. When I saw teachers going, oh, that made me feel full, you know, and so, that's, you know, it's a giving heart, and you guys have a very awesome giving heart to what you're doing, and I really appreciate it. And like I said, please invite us, any of us, all of us. Dr. Jones, he'll show up too, right? So, but we definitely appreciate you guys coming out this evening. I know it's taking time out of your needs for your children too, so definitely thank you for coming.
I am going to give Dr. Jones the last word, I was going to, and then I thought of the one thing of the suggestion that I have. I know how much you all support teachers and your entire staff. I'm going to say, and if you've heard me from the DAS, I have a special heart right now, and believe me, I am not in the medical profession, most of my family would tell you that is a good thing, because I'm not, I am not, that was not the skill set that I got, but I will tell you, our nurses are...
Underwater.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just encourage, I know we want to, I'm just saying on behalf of me, some support in that, in those nursing offices, because they are overwhelmed, and their job, we need them to stay. One thing this board has done very well about is having a nurse in every school. Ever since I've been on the board, it was a commitment, but that's not everywhere. We need these ladies to, we need these ladies and gentlemen to stay, but I would just say, keep an extra measure for those nurses. I'm just, that's from my heart, but I know what they are doing, and I don't know how they're doing it, so.
Yeah, and speaking of that, one of the things you may not know is we've hired, in addition to the nurses, we've hired five contact tracers to try to offset some of the work that our nurses are doing. They're working all weekend long, doing contact tracing. Biggest surprise for me coming to Stafford has really been the under-investment locally in schools. It's just something I did not expect. And I don't, and I'm not really sure where we're ranked, but I think when Dr. Kizner, when I first arrived, there were one hundred and thirty-two school divisions, we were one-twenty-three of one-thirty-two, in terms of local funding. And I'll just, I'll pay a lot of attention to budgets, Chris is more of an expert than me, but we still have not recovered from the recession, which is now thirteen years old. We're still not funding schools like we were thirteen years ago. And the state, and the state has done more funding than, and at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the recession, there was a lot more pressure on localities. Stafford's challenges us, we're the second fastest-growing school division in the state, so we shouldn't, we should not have the challenge of funds. So, you know, we will advocate, because we're supposed to, for funding, but oftentimes, if we're the only ones advocating for it, then it's in vain. So, I appreciate your, your commitment to that. I'd like to talk to you more about what happened, you said you were in West, was it West Virginia? Pennsylvania, yeah, Virginia's funding model is very different. So, if you want to talk more about that, I'm happy to engage in that conversation with you. But there's a real, there's a real funding challenge in our state. In a community like ours, it shouldn't, it shouldn't exist. So, thank you for being here tonight.
I don't know if Ms. Young is still on, I know she, I think she was on virtually, or at least she was at one point. I just want to make, see if she has any comment.
No. Oh, sorry, I didn't see her, she is on.
Okay. I wanted to give her an opportunity if she wanted to say anything. She may be between two things, but I wanted to make sure that gave her the opportunity. Again, use us as a resource, and we are so happy that you all are here, and let's hope maybe in the spring we'll have a PTO, let's see, Officers Party, we made it, I, we, we used to have one, and maybe it can be a big party with all of us, whether it's inside or outside.
PTO prom.
That's right, PTO prom, so you all have a wonderful evening, and again, thanks again, thank you.